Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. And with that, we will move to a roll call, please, Kevin?
Councilmember Rivers?
Here.
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey? Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here. That's right, I get to be lots of different things, huh? So with that, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Seems that we're able to stay in sync a lot better in person than we are on Zoom. It's always challenging with the microphones. So with that, we will move to the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. Are there any questions or corrections to those minutes? No? Then I will open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item can please raise your hand. I am seeing no one in the audience raise their hand or come forward. Kevin, would you poll the online attendees?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that will end public comment.
Thank you for that. Then I would be looking for a motion for the regular meeting minutes of January 10th, 2023, and the special joint meeting on January 17th, 2023.
Can we do these separately because I need to abstain on the 17th?
We can do that. So the first one is the regular meeting of January 10th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve those minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Since we're all here, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions?
I abstain, I was absent.
Okay, so we have one abstention and four yeses. So we will move to the next item, which is the special joint meeting of January 17th. Do I have a motion for that?
And move to approve the joint meeting minutes?
Second? You have a motion and second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions on the January 17th meeting minutes?
Abstain.
Okay.
Abstain.
Okay, and we have, that passes three and two abstentions and no noes. Do you have all of that, Kevin? That got a little complicated, but okay, thank you. So with that, we will move to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers, in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store, or by texting your zip code, which is 94931, to 888777. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611, and of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Nixle. So with that, we will be looking for the approval of the final agenda. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So there's, there is an item before you on the dais. It's also at the back table for the public, as well as posted on the city website. There was a request from SETA for a, just went to all the cities, but they're requesting a letter of support for grant application for various transportation facilities across the county. And they need this before our next city council, our next scheduled city council meeting, so therefore, that's why it's the late add. It was unknown at the time of the publishing of the agenda.
Damien, there's one other fact that the council would need to, by the way, the council needs to add an item to the agenda by a four-fifths vote. The other finding they need to make is that it came to your attention after the agenda was posted. Can you provide that information?
Yes, it was. It was, it came to my attention after we had already published the agenda and it was posted. And as the city attorney said, it does require a four-fifths vote to add it to the agenda on the regular. I propose that it's added to the regular calendar at the end. So, Damien?
Yes, Laura? I just had a question, that the letter that came along with this requesting the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm misreading this. Okay, so this letter is dated, that we're going to send is dated tomorrow. When did you become aware of the, the request?
It was Monday, like yesterday, really, is when I became aware of, became aware of the need for the, need for the letter before our next meeting.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to add this item to our agenda?
I make the motion to add this SETA letter to the agenda today.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then that passes unanimously and we will add it at the end of our regular items then. Thank you for that. Next, we will, no other changes to the agenda, correct? City Manager?
Correct, no other changes.
Okay, just let I check. So with that, we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act and the Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will open public comment.
Yes.
Ms. Berman?
Hi, my name is Michelle, and, Michelle Berman, and I walk the city every day, especially along the creeks. And since we had the nine atmospheric rivers and the one bomb blast, there's a lot of plastic out there and the trees have captured plastic. It's like laundry hanging out there. And I've just been thinking about how we can get that picked up. I don't know how, but I just want to bring it to your attention that there's, it's littered. All the creeks are littered with plastic, and it would be great to get it before it goes to the Laguna. And, and I have thoughts about what we might be able to do to capture the plastic as it's flowing in the next cyclone bombs. So I just wanted to bring that to our attention. And, and I know that there's these, these suit, these little inner tube things where you can step inside and go down the creek. And maybe it would be good to invest in one and have folks collect plastic from, from the creek itself. I mean, I was thinking, I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment for citizens' business? Seeing none in our room, could we ask the attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that will end public comment.
Thank you for that. We'll bring it back and then I guess we'll just move on to the consent calendar. And that, comments were also for anything on the consent calendar. I wanted to be sure that people caught that, in case you had comments on the consent calendar. I'm seeing nodding heads, so, okay. So with that, we have, let's see.
Excuse me, Mayor, before the council, before the council considers the consent calendar, there's one small clarification I just wanted to point out, in case anyone's wondering. On package page, packet page 36, this is related to the, to item 8D. It's the digitization project. There's three different prices shown there in the proposal, and we're, what we're proposing is the middle one. So this is on packet page 36, it's image plus, which is the, the level of scanning that we're proposing in that item. So just wanted to point that out before the council considers the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you for that. Do any of the council members have any questions or want to poll any of the consent items? Yes?
I just have a question related to what you just said. It seems like the only difference is the, between the full service and the image plus is the physical page counts. Is that something we don't need? Or?
We, so we, as far as just basic quality control, we try to make sure the number of pages, like in the, that were in the documents are in the scanned files too, just as a basic quality control kind of check. Is that, was that the question?
I don't know if we need to pull it to, for me to continue asking this question, or?
I mean, if, if it's brief, I think we could just talk about it, but if it's, if it's a longer?
Yeah, it just seems like that's something that they offer. I'm just looking at, like, what's the difference between the highest level that they offer, the full service and the image plus? And it says that they don't offer physical page counts for the middle level of service that you're proposing. That's the only difference I could notice.
Oh, right, yeah.
So I'm wondering, like, is, happy to go along with that recommendation, I just wanted to understand what the difference is.
Yeah, we've, we've already done one project with them already at this level, and that seems to be adequate for what we needed it for, in terms of the, the level of quality control. It didn't seem to be worth the extra money for the, the extra level of quality control for the documents we're dealing with.
Any other questions or concerns on the consent calendar? Not seeing any, so for the benefit of the public, we have, let's see, five items on the consent calendar, well, 1A treatment system and controller repairs and replacements. We have resolution appointing the engineer of work for preparing the City of Kattati Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for fiscal year 2324. We have authorization for a letter of support for a health and human services hub in Warner Park. We have standard services agreement with the Western Integrated Systems for Document Digitization, easy for me to say. And then the item that was just added was a letter of support for SETA for a grant. So those are the items on the consent calendar.
Mayor Harvey, I think you added that to the regular agenda, not the consent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did, you're right. Thank you for that correction. I put it in the wrong spot on my notes. Yes, thank you for that. So with that, we have four items on the consent calendar. So do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Not hearing any? So then we will move to direction on future agenda items? Anything? Nope? Okay. Then we will move to the regular agenda. And then the first item on the agenda is appointment of planning commissioner members. And is there a staff report?
Sure, Mayor, I'll have a, just a brief staff report. So as is typical after, after election, new council members are seated and they have to nominate their planning commissioners. And so the item before you tonight is the nominated planning commissioners for Council Member Lemus and Council Member Rivers. And we had, we had two applicants, Ed Gilardi and Michelle Berman, and those applications are included in the packet. And as I, as I pointed out, in accordance with the Kattati's municipal code, the council members nominate the candidate, and then the council by majority vote ratifies the nomination. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions? Okay, then we will open this up for public comment. We'll start with the remote, the Zoom members. This round, how's that?
Sounds good, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that will end public comment.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council and so we can, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the public here. I went backwards the other way, so yeah. Any public comments from the audience here? Not seeing any, what, are you up, down? I wasn't sure whether you were coming up or not.
I wasn't sure either.
Okay.
Michelle Berman, Kattati resident. I only have three minutes. I made a mistake. And I am so proud to stand here in front of this council. Because I feel like my character is not defined by a mistake. And it has taken me a long time to face the shame of the mistake that I made inside myself. And I realize that 22 years ago, when I, when I moved to this town, I didn't feel heard. I didn't feel appreciated or seen for my other way of approaching things by the seated, seated council. And, and I made some bad decisions based on that. And I thought I knew. I sat in judgment of that council, and I thought I knew better, and I thought I could see into the future. And standing here right now, nobody can judge me as much as I've judged myself. And I realize I know absolutely nothing. That's what I know about the future. And as a planning commissioner, I, I realize that knowing absolutely nothing is a great place to be. Because you will get a packet, and you will read the packet, and you will listen to people when they come forward, and you will understand, and you will know. And that's how you know. And you ask questions and you do your homework, and that's how you know. So I am, I feel very fortunate to be looking into your eyes, each of you, and to be given this opportunity, because it has not been easy to be me in this town. And I, I feel like I did my mea culpa. And there's more to be done, so I can step into the light and feel the sunshine and appreciate where I live and that I am offered a second chance. So I just want to share my gratitude for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. And I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion.
So, so on, on Councilmember Lemus's appointment, nomination of Ed Gilardi, it's an impressive list of community service, including 20 years on the, on our school board, and many other things, Citizen of the Year, and I don't have any, any concerns with that nomination. I think that, that the incident that Michelle Berman was just speaking about was a troubling one to me at the time, and as one of the largest fines levied by the FPPC, that clearly that, the, the gravity of that situation was, it was recognized as a grave, grave error, a grave act by others as well. So I very much appreciate what, what the applicant just said now, and so I'm struggling with it. I, you know, sort of willfully violating campaign finance laws is a big deal to me, and, and so I'm struggling with that nomination of the K-Maid. The other, the other concern I have is one that was raised by some of the public comment letters, which is a concern about all planning commissioners living on the east side. And so I am open to ideas of, of extending the application period for, for Councilmember Rivers' position, just, just to see if we can get a broader pool that might provide some more, some broader representation as well. It wouldn't cause a quorum issue with the commission, there would be four seated commissioners out of five, so I think we'd be okay there if we extended it for a month. So that's where I'm kind of leaning right now, but I'm interested in hearing what others have to say. Thanks.
Next? Laura?
Thank you. I, I wasn't here when all of that happened. I believe it was 2006. Six, it was 2006. The, the article that somebody sent us was published in 2010, four years after the fact. But in my knowledge of Shelley, Michelle, she's, no one can say she's not strong-willed and opinionated, but she's one of the most compassionate people that I know, and so my experience of her has been her advocating for the people in our community who are the most marginalized and the least powerful, and I think that speaks well of her character. I also have concerns about the campaign finance violations. My rule of thumb in my personal life is that I think people can change, but not that quickly. But it's been 17 years since that happened, and to me, I think a person really can change quite a bit in 17 years. Also, I, I give a lot of deference to the council member whose appointment this is, so I'm certain, well, I don't know, but I assume that Councilmember Rivers has spoken with Michelle and made her own judgment of her character. So if that's who Councilmember Rivers would like to appoint at this, at this moment, I'm, I would be supportive of that. I also wanted to say, I don't know if you were planning to say something later, but we have an outgoing commissioner, Brittany Murphy, who I hope will have time to say a thank you for, before we're done with this agenda item. If there's time for that later, we can bring it back.
Sylvia, did you want to weigh in?
Well, yeah, as far as Ed Gilardi, even he's applying, but, you know, like my colleague here said, he has a lot of experience and a lot of, he brings a lot of experience and even has served on the school board and the Kattati accordion festival, and he's been like a 40-plus or almost 40-year resident, almost 40 years here in Kattati, so. And, and in regards to Michelle Berman, and I also agree, the FPPC violations, I feel like they're like almost 20 years ago, 17, 20 years ago, a long time ago. And I believe in second chances. She really has, I don't know Ms. Berman, but I understand that she's really helped the vulnerable people in the community, and I see that as, as really important, as well as walking all over Kattati and knowing where the impact spots are, you know, the creeks, the streets, all the different areas and communities. And so I, I think that she brings kind of a diverse perspective to the planning commission. And just from my experience in a planning commission, you'll be making you'll be making land use decisions based on different zones and municipal codes. So it's important to really know Kattati. And it sounds like Ms. Berman has walked around Kattati and really knows the community. And like I said, you know, it was an error in judgment, but she has continued to serve the community in many ways. And so I'm also supportive of her being a planning commissioner.
Okay. Okay, so to make sure I say what I intend, I actually wrote it down, so I'm just going to read it. So in 2006, 17 years ago, Michelle Berman made a poor decision. She then told the truth about what she did, expressed remorse, and paid a steep price. Back then, she paid $15,000 in fines. Based on the response to her nomination to the planning commission, the damage to her reputation and members of our city's trust in her continues to this day. As a continuation high school teacher, I've dedicated my career to the value of working through failure, providing second chances, forgiveness, and the opportunity to make up for past wrongs. Cancel culture leaves little space for growth. Ms. Berman is a longtime resident of Kattati. She walks two hours each day throughout Kattati, regularly reporting trash, environmental damage, and graffiti she encounters on her walks. She works as a home health worker for our city's elders and is a renter in Kattati. Since 2006, she has been working in the background to support our city's most vulnerable residents. In addition to caring for them, she also serves as their advocate. For example, she organized a meeting with our city's low-income senior housing residents to share their concerns with me, so we might help to meet their needs. After an application period consistent with past ones, Ms. Berman was one of the two people who applied for the commission's two positions. Councilwoman Lemus and I decided to appoint them because they bring unique experience and important perspectives to the commission. In addition to believing in second chances, I also believe that diversity of opinion contributes to the most robust decisions. Ms. Berman will bring these voices onto the commission. So I hope you will join Councilwoman Lemus and I in supporting our appointment of Ed Gilardi and Michelle Berman to the Kattati Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's down to me. So I appreciate Ms. Berman coming up and speaking to us. That's really the first time that I've heard, you know, that after this episode. And I know that that takes a lot of courage. And I really respect that she, before the whole community, has pointed out her error in judgment. So I give her a lot of kudos for doing that. That's not easy. The aspect that I've received, a lot of phone calls and messages and stuff really surrounded itself around the timeframe that we did the applications. We put these applications out there during Christmas time when a lot of folks were not around. And I did hear from numerous folks that they weren't even, they weren't aware because of the time period that it happened. So I know we, over the years, we have feast and famine when it comes to, you know, getting applications. Sometimes we'll get none, sometimes we'll get one. I think the last time, I believe, Laura, you got like four applications, which was like really quite the feast that you had. So I know that that changes. And so my concern is that we're doing this and that we did it over a time period when a lot of folks were really busy with the holidays and maybe did not see it and didn't have the opportunity. So that's really my concern with moving forward at this moment in time. That, you know, should we open this up and, you know, give a little bit more time to see if, you know, maybe there were some folks that just didn't hear about it. So that's kind of where I'm at, at this point. So with that, we, if there's no more discussion...
So just on the date issue, the FPPC judgment, I believe, was 2010. That's the date I meant. So that my, I, the nominating council members, I am comfortable that they have done their due diligence. And having had a full discussion of issues here, I'm comfortable moving forward with the nominations.
Okay, then we've had our discussion. I would entertain a motion. Do we want to take them together then? Is that what I'm hearing? Sure, okay, then I would entertain a motion. We can... Does it matter if we do them separately or together?
No, I meant...
Mr.?
Are we allowed to call for it if it's for a nomination?
Yes. Right, they can make a motion, yeah.
All right. I move that we nominate Ed Gilardi and Michelle Berman to the planning commission.
I second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Let's see, I don't know how, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will be a no at this point. So with that, the motion carries. And we can move on. So nomination, yeah.
Can we say a few words of thanks to Brittany Murphy?
We can. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think that the planning commission would do something to honor her. City manager?
Well, I mean, for outgoing planning commission members, I don't know. I mean, I think we certainly can, you know, at our last meeting, can do something to recognize her service.
So I was anticipating her last meeting being last week. And unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it. So I'm not sure what her plans are for future meeting agendas. We will definitely make an effort. But I'm sure she would appreciate some nice words.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to her. It's such a big job, and I'm just grateful that she took it on. And I feel like we need to recognize that service. So thank you, if you're watching this recording or live.
And then just super quickly, I'd just like to say congratulations to our new planning commissioners. Welcome.
So congratulations, Brittany. I do think that we should, you know, reach out and do something. I don't know, we...
I mean, we'll definitely do a thank you for your service letter from the city. But it sounds like if that was, if our last meeting has already passed, then that's most likely what we'll be doing.
So that would be nice if we could do that? I think that that would be nice. So with that now, can, now we're ready to move on. Okay, so the next item is nominations for regional commissions and committees on behalf of the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association and the City Selection Committee. So I do have one question before we kind of get into this, Damian. And that is that I think it got overlooked somehow. But I'm looking for the letter. The letter, the second letter from Stephen Zollman had on it that he was applying for LAFCO and the Sonoma County Oversight Board. But when the letter came from the city clerk kind of running all of this, it said that there were no letters for the successor agency oversight committee. So I don't know how we address that since the clerk said that there weren't any, but there was.
There weren't, yeah, so his letter is unique in that it like asks for both?
Both of his letters asked for two things. They were both unique.
So I'm sorry, Mayor, could you say that again? What was the question specifically?
So, do we consider that? It says no, no letters of interest were received, but in fact, there were. He did submit a letter, and it was submitted, you know, within the timeframe. Do we consider that since there was an oversight with the clerk putting out the list? Or how do we handle that?
Which, I'm sorry, which board was it that he asked for?
He asked to be, in his letter for LAFCO, he says, "I am applying for LAFCO and the Sonoma County Oversight Board Committee alternate positions." He's applying for both alternate positions.
Got it, okay.
So...
Well, so it's in the letter, so I would recommend that we discuss it and get voting direction.
Okay.
It'll probably come up in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. It just was one of those things that it's kind of hard when it gets buried in one, in one letter and probably the, you know, the clerk just probably read right past that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so then with that, does anybody have any questions on this? Yeah.
I had a question directly related to what you're saying because it was unclear to me whether he was requesting to apply as the LAFCO primary and the successor, the Oversight Board alternate. Or if he was requesting to be alternate on both of them. The way it's worded, it wasn't clear to me.
I guess I read it, "I am applying for LAFCO and Sonoma County Oversight Board Committee alternate positions."
Okay, so he's...
That's the way I read, I mean, yeah, you could probably put that word alternate.
Which words does alternate modify? I'm not sure.
Yeah. Well, we know that the Oversight Board Committee definitely is an alternate position because it says that. LAFCO has two seats and an alternate. So we'll see where that goes then. Yeah, so any other questions on that? Kay, did you have any questions? No? Okay. So then what we will do is we will open this up for public comment. Any public comment on the Mayors and Council Members Association and City Selection Committee nominations here in the audience? Anybody want to jump up? I'm seeing nobody jumping up. Okay, Kevin?
Mayor Harvey, we have lost our Zoom attendee, just attendees here in the council chamber. So that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you. That's what I saw too, but I wanted to be sure it wasn't just me. So with that, I will close public comment on this. I think it might be easiest to go one by one. Is that kind of okay with you guys? And on a couple of them, I might have to keep like a little tally. So you'll have to be patient with me. So on the A-BAG Executive Board alternate seat, there was one letter of interest and one applicant. So generally, is everyone... Okay, all right. All right, I see, all right, okay. So on the Child Care Planning Council of Sonoma County, there is one seat. It's currently held by Victoria Fleming. And there is one letter of interest received on this also. So... So how does that work if she's already in the position? Well... And now he's trying to take that seat? Well, it says that it's available. So her term must have expired at some point or is expiring. They didn't put a term on that.
Yeah, that was my understanding, is that her term had expired.
It did expire, okay, all right. It's worded kind of, I agree it's worded a little oddly, yeah, yeah. So... So everyone thumbs up with that one? Okay, good, okay. So now it gets a little bit trickier here. So now we have the Sonoma County Agricultural Preservation and Open Space District Citizens Advisory Committee. And there is one seat. And we have two letters of interest. One from Todd Lands in Cloverdale and one from Mark Stapp in Santa Rosa. And so we will have to pick a person. So I'm gonna, let's see, do it this way, Kay. Laura. Susan. Ben. And Sylvia. Okay, so Kay, do you have, I'm gonna start this way. And I'll just see who you would like, and maybe we'll all agree. We'll see.
So this is the one I struggled the most with?
We can come back if we need to. But for a first round, what are you thinking? Or do you want to wait?
Well, I was just gonna offer that, you know, things that stood out for me with Mark Stapp, that he and his wife are Level 2 firefighters. Really, for me, says that they're very engaged with the open space around them. And that was really impressive to me and told me that it was... And he's also on a bunch of other projects surrounding agriculture and open space. So he was the one that I was leaning towards.
Okay, we can start with that. And Laura, did you have thoughts?
I'm also supporting Mark Stapp.
Okay. And Ben?
They both have significant, relevant experience. Cloverdale, the north part of the county is, I looked up the current board, and the north part of the county is not represented well on it. So on that basis, I was leaning towards Todd Lands. But I would be quite happy with either of them on that board. So that's why I'm currently sitting, but happy with either.
You're sitting in the middle, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, if we were, I would lean towards Todd Lands, but I'm okay either way.
Okay. And Sylvia?
I'm supporting Mark Stapp for that position.
Okay. And I too looked at the different qualifications and things. And Mark's application did stand out to me. Neither of the candidates reached out. So I had no, you know, discussions with either of them. So that's kind of where I would be headed. So Ben, do you want to?
Like I said, I'm happy with your one.
All right, so then we will go with Mark on that one. Everybody good with that? Okay, all right. Then the North Bay Division League of California Cities Executive Board, one seat. There'll be more seats coming out on this because we did lose quite a few. But for right now, there is one seat to fill John Sawyer's spot. And we received one letter from Jackie Elward in Marner Park. Everybody good with that? Okay, all right, move right along. So Sonoma Marin Area Transit Board of Directors, there's two seats. And they are currently held by Melanie Bagby and Chris Rogers. And it looks like they have reapplied for those seats. And we're okay with that? Okay, all right. So let me do my little thing here. Okay. Then we will move on to the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. There's two seats and alternate. So would it be helpful if people named their two seats and then their alternate? We try it that way? And I'll start this way. How's that? We'll go this way. So Sylvia?
Sure. For the two seats, Susan Harvey and Sandra Lowe. The alternate, Steven, I'm sorry, Jeff Hkreppke.
Okay, alternate, okay, Ben?
Exactly the same.
Okay. And Laura?
Same, except I really didn't have a strong preference about who the alternate was.
Okay. And Kay?
I had Sandra and Susan. But I actually had Stephen Zollman as the alternate. He actually did reach out to me.
Okay.
And so I would like to put my support behind him.
Okay. All right. And I guess I can vote for myself, right? And I did, Sandra did reach out to me. I did have a discussion with her. And Jeff spoke with me at the new mayors and council members. So I would lean towards Sandra as the seat and Jeff as the alternate. That's where I would be leaning. So it looks like what we have is Sandra and myself for the seats. And Jeff wins out four to one on the alternate. Are you okay with that? Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, no, well, I want to give you a chance to, to change that if you want, so, okay. So that's good. Then we will move on to the Sonoma County Successors Agency Oversight Board, and Steven did put forth a letter, so my thought is if it, if it comes to a vote and, and they, um, you know, mentioned that there was an oversight, that we support that? Is everyone okay with that? Okay. All right, so we'll do that, and if not, I guess they'll re, um, they'll readdress it. And the lovely, um, Rand Board is always one of those ones that always has a hard time getting someone. I would imagine that that might be taken up, you know, in the meeting itself.
As the mayor, you're eligible.
Oh, boy. Sounds like fun. That's always one that, that never gets there, so, yeah. Yeah, I think that that's how Mark ended up in it the last time, is no help. I don't know what it is about that, it must be something that they do that, that, uh...
Yeah, it's, that, it's like a...
It's scary to everyone.
Yeah, dispatch, uh, communication centers, I think is mostly what they deal with, but only meet once or twice a year. Yeah, okay, live scans, yeah.
Well, there you go. And it, it's always been curious to me why it has to be a mayor, too. I don't, never had quite understood that, but that's the way they did it, so, so, so be it. So the next one we have is the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Board, one seat, and, um, there was one letter of interest for, from Brian Barnacle. And we good with that? Okay. Hey, you guys are great, good job, team! So it looks like I have my, um, direction. Do we need a motion for that, um, Mr. Barker, since it's direction?
I think traditionally we had a motion to take care of it, yes.
Yeah, I, I would also recommend that, um, that the motion include the ability for the mayor to have some latitude if, uh, like the Rand Board discussion comes up at the, the meeting that she has the latitude to vote, or if the initial, um, uh, the initial selections that the council wants don't win out, then it could result in a follow-on conversation, and, um, the mayor typically needs some latitude to be able to, um, vote how she feels best based on the information presented.
Yeah, because sometimes the first round doesn't work, work out, and they have to do multiple rounds.
Subsequent rounds of voting to fin- finally arrive at somebody.
Right, yeah, some, some form of agreement.
And they can even take nominees from the floor in some cases, so, yeah.
I'm so moved.
Second, second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any noes? Any abstentions? Not seeing any that that passes unanimously, and I have my marching orders, so thank you very much. I will march accordingly. Okay, so with that, we are on to award of the construction contract for the 2023 pavement rehabilitation project. So we have a staff report for that.
We have, uh, Craig Scott remote.
Oh, my goodness!
Yes, this will be a first, right? Staff presentation via remote. Mayor members of the council, this is Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Uh, we're looking for, um, a decision to award the construction contract and the related professional service agreements for the 2023 street rehabilitation project. Next slide, please.
Bless you.
Just, um, as a background, we've, the city every year adopts a five-year capital improvement program, and that includes a street, a chapter on all the streets, and those priority street projects are identified, uh, or informed by the pavement management program, which is regulated, uh, by the state to, for us to continue to be eligible for grant money, um, every two years. So every two years, the streets are physically inspected, and, um, each segment is given a, a rating as to their condition, and that's, um, used in a model, uh, to optimize our, our funding, our spending of funds to rehabilitate our streets. Um, and the city is well along on this process. We've spent, just in the last two years alone, $5.7 million on roadway maintenance and rehabilitation. Our goal is to get past the expensive rehabilitation, pavement treatments, and, uh, just be doing, uh, preservation or slurry seal, which is just a fraction of the cost. On this project, specifically on June 28th, 2020, uh, last, just last year, uh, the city council approved a design agreement for this project, and the design was completed, and the project was advertised in November. Next slide. The, uh, the scope is presented visually and also as a list. So here's the picture. Uh, it's a little better than what was in the package, which showed the original design scope, which with, with areas crossed off. We had much more, many more streets that were in the original contract, but, um, we cannot move forward with those on the constru- for the construction because it was much more than our, our, um, budgeted amount. Um, these are the, the streets we decided to go forward with, except for Lund Hill, which was an bid alternate for $500,000. And again, that was, that, well, in addition to those other streets, this one was lopped off as well. So we are able to stay within our budget. You've got, um, uh, the dark streets are the ones for full-depth reclamation. That's basically rebuilding the street. And then the shaded, the light gray are the, the lower-cost slurry seal treatments. Next slide, please. Um, so here's the list of the streets. Uh, in addition to this, we did add the pathway in front of Putnam Park as well as some minor grading and then resurfacing of, of that parking lot. Uh, next slide, please. And here's the, the Putnam Park. Um, it's, it's pretty small here, but it just shows generally the scope with, uh, um, the extent of the pathway, which is going to be that, um, uh, decomposed granite with a, a binder in it. Um, that's kind of laid down like paving, it's rolled and, um, compacted, and that's become a commonly-used, um, material around the city. You know, recently, we did, um, Pocket Park and the McGinnis Pathway, as well as, uh, West School Street, uh, pedestrian pathway in this material, and then what's across the street from City Hall. Um, you'll see that material as well. Uh, next slide. Okay, so we opened bids on December 20th, and we received four bids, which is a good number to, to be competitive. The low bid, uh, was from Argonaut, and, um, for that amount, you know, which is 4% below the engineer's estimate. Excuse me, the low bid, uh, was evaluated and determined to be responsive. It had all the components in there that, um, provided us, um, uh, a chance to move forward with this, this as a responsive bid. All right, next slide, please. The additional contracts that go along with this approval, during, during the design, the city added extra streets and then the Putnam Park improvements, which required surveying and an environmental document. And so those added up to 60,775 on top of the original design contract. Um, so we're seeking approval for tho- that service. Uh, the construction management inspection for the project, uh, for $214,030, and, uh, city staff requested proposals for these efforts and found them to be fair and reasonable, that recommends them for approval. Um, the professional costs are all accounted for in the project budget. Next slide. Which is here. So we've got, um, in the adopted annual budget, um, there is $3.21 million allocated and approved for this project. And as you can see, we had to skinny down the contingency, it's only 7%. Usually we like to see like 10 or even 15%, um, but we're going to try to make this work. And, um, this, this has all those components, the construction, those professional service agreements, and we are able to stay within that, um, budgeted amount. So no additional request for funding is being requested. Uh, the revenue source is from the street bond, which I believe we can start spending in February, so the timing is really good on this. Uh, next slide, please. And that brings us to our recommendation, um, which is to, to adopt a resolution awarding the project con- construction contract to Argonaut, uh, and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract, as well as the construction management inspection agreement and amendments to the design agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments up to that approved project budget. So that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, questions? Yes, Laura?
Thank you. Is this the same contractor who did the slurry seal work that we had? Was it last year or the year before in the Bird section and south of Myrtle?
Yes, it is, Argonaut, yes.
Was there any adjustment to the scope of work or the instructions they received when they put together their bid about keeping the traffic off of the roads for a longer period of time for the areas where they're going to do the slurry seal work? I know, I'm sure you remember the garbage truck fiasco that happened, where we had to redo parts of the slurry seal, and there were pits left that were hazards for bicycles, and they were kind of slow to clean those up. So I'm just a little concerned about the slurry seal getting done by the same contractor when we had kind of a bad outcome.
Yes, we've had a slurry seal project since then. We did begin a circle this summer, Park Avenue, um, a number of streets, all of Blodgett, um, down, down in the industrial area. And we had a high level of success and minimal. We had some localized, um, disturbance, you know, damaging of their newly paved areas, but nothing to like the extent of Bird Street. And we attribute that to lessons learned. Like you said, um, we avoided having garbage trucks on their regular routine route, route, the day after. So we scheduled it to allow for a couple days at least. I think what else, um, what also helped is we gave it another, it doesn't take long, another half hour, another hour, and we're really vigilant about keeping folks off of that newly paved surface. It'll be brown when it's first put down, and then when it turns black, it's called, it's, it's said to be set, and that is okay to drive on, but we gave it an extra, you know, 35, 30 to 40, uh, 30 to minutes to an hour following that. We still had some bad actors. Uh, Lipton Circle was one of them, where we had a couple residents, um, drive on it immediately after it was done, and we know who those are because they have these black tire marks up their driveway now forever. Um, so there's, there are bad actors, and I was discussing with the police chief ahead of this meeting, possible ways, because that's, that's just criminal behavior, um, to take down a barricade and intentionally drive your car over it to, um, damage the, the, the street. So we were looking at ways to maybe increase surveillance during that period of time. So mostly the garbage trucks increase the period of time where it's a set, and then maybe some oversight, um, is, is, so we, we think we can improve upon the Bird Street, um, operation.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, questions? Sylvia, Ben? Yeah, I, I'm glad we've kind of changed our procedures on that because that was really, that was really horrific. Um, it was almost like, why did we bother? It was such a mess, and was every driveway, it seemed like people were coming in and out of and, and made a mess. So I have a question, um, and, and I just want to make sure that, that it, that it's clear. It says on page, um, 69, it lists all the streets, and included in there are, um, some streets like Wolford Circle and Agiri Way and Lasker Lane. Um, it says they're included in the bid, yet it says that they are going to be done at a later date. So were they included in the bid and we changed the bid? Or were they taken out before they did the bid? Can somebody help me with that?
Those, um, the, the streets listed in the staff report are, well, tho- those streets were, um, included in the design, so they're fully designed. And then, um, as I mentioned during the presentation, we needed to drop about half of those, and the streets that were, that are remaining, that I showed in the, um, the, listed here in this presentation, those are the ones that are in the bid documents. I, I am not looking at page 69, but if that said it's in the bid, that was a typo, because those streets were not what we're looking to construct.
Okay, that's what I was looking for clarification on, because we don't have the bid doc, you know, we don't have the bid documents in our packet, and we really don't have, um, you know. It, it was really kind of hard to see based upon the, the, um, information that we had. We kind of had the, the bids from the different contractors, but we didn't really have a, a map or anything like that. So it, on one page it said they're in, and on the other page it sounded like they were out, and I just wanted to be sure that, that, that the bid did not have them in there, so we're clear.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
Because the resolution itself lists those streets as included in the bid. I just want, I would also like to get clear in the, like the fifth whereas, it lists Agiri Way, Alstom, Delano, Lasker, Locust, Marsh, et cetera. So everything except Lasker, no, even Lasker Lane is in there.
Can I add that the last whereas also talks about it being at a later date, those streets? The last whereas, uh, the last whereas on the same page?
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading.
Hey, Kevin, do you want to pull, pull up that, um, figure again from the PowerPoint?
Uh, yeah, I'll get the PowerPoint up. Do you remember?
Yeah, Lasker, Lasker Lane, Agiri Way, those are included.
They are in the whereas in the middle of the page there.
Yeah, so, um, uh, Mayor, that, that whereas that Council Member Ford brought up. So as, uh, Craig Scott had said, they were in the design, but what actually got bid was, um, some reconstructions, so Page and Delano, um, and then Slurry Seal and Old Rubid Highway through downtown, um, which isn't one of the streets listed, but that's, that was in the, um, bid packet. And then, um, streets off of, so Myrtle, the, the entire length of Myrtle from Old Rubid Highway all the way to the city limits, and then some streets behind it, so like, um, Lebec, Macklin, John Roberts.
So does this resolution need to be updated? It does not match with...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can, um, just amend it before we adopt it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you writing that down, are you writing that down, Ben? Well, we can give staff direction to make sure that it matches.
The list matches this list.
That list matches, yeah, yeah. I think we can, we can do that, so, okay. So any more questions on this? Okay, then, um, I will open, um, this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on our 2023 pavement rehabilitation? Not seeing anybody running up to the podium here, and, oops, uh-oh. Okay, we, we do see someone running.
Michelle Berman. I'm wondering about burying our PG&E lines, and if we can do that along with street rehabilitation. I know it's late. I'm late. So I, I would just like to put that in, in our thought process, to bury the lines. And, uh, also, I think I understood that the walkway beside Putnam Park would be the same material that's on the paths by, by Pocket Park. And the contractor who did that work dug up those paths and put the dirt into the creek. Yes, in both places by McGinnis and over by Pocket Park. And I tried to get the city's attention and I did get Laura's because she was walking by when they had just done it by Pocket Park. But I, I don't want them to not cart off the dirt and we need, and not put it in the creek beds. So I'm concerned about that and, and the environmental impact of that. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Not seen anyone jump up. So, oops, we have a hand by one of our attendees, so we will go to the Zoom attendees.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Jenny Blaker, you have the floor.
Hello, my, yes, my name's Jenny Blaker. I'm a little confused because this is all about pavement rehabilitation. And on seeing the map or the plan for Putnam Park, that seemed to be relating to the Putnam Park Capital Improvement Plan or not. I understood that the first phase of that would be the walking trail and the bridge over the Laguna and that there was some provision or could be some provision for planting trees to shade the path and so on alongside the waterway there that goes along the east side of Putnam Park. And I'm wondering if there will be an opportunity for public input? If that is being considered now as part of this or, or what? I'm a little confused because it's pavement rehabilitation, but it also seemed to be relating to the, the Capital Improvement Plan for the park and there's a lot more to it than, than that. So if you could clarify, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That won't.
Mayor Harvey, that will end with the comment.
So as I understand it, and Craig, since you're online, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's just an inclusion of the parking lot for Putnam Park and that pathway that's on Myrtle. It's not that we're doing the park plan. We were, we are just including the parking lot and that path at this point in time with the, with the construction projects. Am I?
That, that's correct. These are not the Putnam Park master plan improvements.
Okay.
The parking lot has puddles, draining issues. So we're going to do some minor grading and then repaving it because it's all cracked. And then the pathway there, we're going to make it ADA compatible. It's, it's a, it's a rough path right now. So these are all outside, separate from the master plan, Putnam Park improvements. You're correct.
Okay, so to clarify, this is really about paving and it just happens that we're going to pick up that path. So hopefully when we do the park stuff, you will be included in that. And then I'd also like to address the concern around the dumping of the dirt. Could we do something to ensure that that doesn't happen? And the only reason I'm concerned about that is there are two, if you will, while not exactly creeks, there are two waterways on either side of this particular path that's going to be being worked on, so.
We'll pay, we'll pay particular close attention to that. The, the contractor for the Pocket Park had really unconventional methods and kind of did things that we did not, you know, just undercover of darkness or something. And it, it wasn't in the creek, from my understanding. It was kind of in the embankment and they did go back and remediate it and the plants that were underneath were brought back and everything else. So we gave them a slap on the wrist and told them never to do that again. With Argonaut, they're, they're a different contractor and we would definitely keep, keep a lookout for anything like that. But it never serves the contractor well to, to violate the, any, any, any of those codes, regulations.
Thank you for that.
And to be clear, I mean, that, that's a, that was an absolute violation of our contract. It's a violation of the law, so it's not permitted or allowed. It was just sometimes you get a rogue contractor that does something random.
We really appreciate the public having eyes and ears out there to bring that to our attention.
Well, and hopefully we won't use that contractor again, hopefully.
It's going to be, it's going to be a mark against them. That's correct.
I'll just say that it was pretty far down the embankment. Depends how you define it, but to me it looked like it was in the creek.
It didn't just slide down, huh?
Any other comments on that? Okay, so then we've had public comment on this. And what would the council like to do here?
I've got a few. So, one tiny thing, the last line of the, of the resolution cheats the budget by $10,000 and needs to be corrected. It should be 3.21 million, not 3.2 million.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Fix that. And, and when we make the motion, we'll just make the list of streets agree with the list we saw in the presentation just by saying that, right? We don't have to go through the list and get the right.
We don't have to give you the list, right? You can come up with them.
Yeah, right, we're fully aware of the list. Yeah, yeah.
And I just wanted to, to, really specifically, I'm not familiar with the Putnam Park master plan. I mean, I've looked at it, but it's been a while. Nothing that's proposed here conflicts with that plan, I assume. The path along the, this, I assume we're just talking the path along the Myrtle frontage and the driveway, the parking lot in its existing footprint. Does the master plan leave the parking lot in its existing footprint? Or is there an envisioned different shape to the parking lot in the future?
The, sorry, Craig, I'll jump in here. So the, the master plan doesn't have any changes to the footprint of the parking lot. All the changes are around that and internal to the park. So, right, so the improvements we're talking about are, I mean, more specifically on the inside, you know, where the, the parking lot meets the pathway to the playground area, it becomes a bird bath and there's also ADA parking on that edge of the parking lot. So it's fixing the grade there so you don't have big ponds of water when it rains. And then just a general slurry kind of treatment in its, in its existing footprint. And then the pathway, as, as Craig said, is just the pathway outside along Myrtle.
It's almost like little ponds in the parking lot when it rains.
Bird baths, yeah.
Yeah, bird baths, yeah, that's it. Any other comments? Or did you have anything? Yeah, I'm so excited to see more paving done. We're getting there. Craig, off the top of your head, do you know what this will do to our PCI? Our Pavement Condition Index?
Well, we hit a high of sixty-eight out of a hundred, right? That was our high watermark. And in the last couple of months, I guess it's dropped to sixty-six. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but I know it's going to be a big summer for us. We have the next item as a street paving project as well.
Right.
And I'd be willing to get that, it gets us into the low seventies.
I always feel like we go two steps forward and one step back. I really want to, I want to see us go three steps forward and no steps back is what I'd like to see.
We're getting there.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you know, Mary, we'll say too that we're going to have another, we have a biannual inspection of our roads, so we'll have another one later this summer, which is good because what he's talking about is just the algorithm. It's just a degradation algorithm, so it's not based on any sort of visual inspection. They just degrade the roads. So they say if you're sixty-eight, a year later, you're not sixty-six, just because that's what the.
With, with no evaluation?
Right.
Just the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Passage of time. But so that's what the visual inspections are good for, it sort of resets it, you know, every two years.
So if people do what they're supposed to do, Laura, and not tear up the streets, then, then they stay at a better PCI than them wrecking them as soon as we pave them. Okay, so with that, I would be looking for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right.
Move that we approve a resolution awarding the construction contract for the 2023 street rehabilitation to Argonaut, Inc., authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract and construction management and inspection services agreement, the design amendments and any needed change orders and amendments up to the authorized project budget amount with the list of streets corrected as we discussed and the budget amount corrected in the final line.
Good job. Do we have a second?
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any noes? Not hearing any, no abstentions, that passes five oh, yay, go streets. So, yeah. Indeed, we could. A bio break? Yes, we will adjourn for five minutes? Five minutes, we will be right back. Then I will call us back in order and thank you for that. And we will move on to the award of the construction contract for the Downtown Civic Center Connectivity and Safety Project. And I bet that Craig is up again.
You're, you're right. Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. We're looking for the award of the construction contract for the Downtown Civic Center Connectivity and Safety Improvements Project and the associated construction management and engineering services during construction professional agreements. And next slide, please. This slide we heard on the prior presentation, so I will just skip past it. Next slide, please. Okay. All right, so the city designed the 2020 street project. And then we only moved forward with the named streets, the Outer Hub, Charles, Henry, George, William, Arthur. And we completed FDR on those streets in 2020. But we have the design already for the Inner Hub and West Sierra Avenue. So that positioned us really well for a 1.25 million dollars of grant money that became available in quick order around middle of 2021. And we applied for that funding and, and got it, we're awarded it. And the premise was to be eligible, we had to have a shelf-ready project, which, which we had with the design, but we had to navigate the NEPA/SEQA and Caltrans project delivery process, which took, took a good year, if not more, fourteen, fifteen months even. So on, well, on July 27th, 2021, the city council approved the design agreement to navigate that process as well as do some touch-ups on the design. And after over a year, as I mentioned, we, we finally got the Caltrans approval to construct on October 24th, 2022. Yeah, that's, that is not a typo. The amount of time that went by between July 27th, 21 and October 24th, 22, with the completed design project, that actually happened. So that's just how, how long it took to go through this, the federalized grant funding process. Next slide, please. Ignore, please ignore the rectangles. That's just the sheet layout for the plans. The red line is the. The red line is the this, you know, the extent of the project. You've got the La Plaza Inner Hub Street and West Sierra Avenue. The entire length from Old Redwood Highway to the city limits, just past the interchange, the undercrossing of Highway 101. Next slide, please. So this is a rehabilitation project, not a preservation project, so it's very significant street work of La Plaza and West Sierra Avenue. Includes upgrading the curb ramps, side, some of the sidewalk, curb and gutter, then the traffic signal detection loop there at West Sierra Avenue, striping. There are street safety countermeasures, and from the local road safety plan, we were, some of us are familiar with the term "countermeasures," that these are measures to put into place to reduce collisions. And these, these measures include maintaining Class II bike lanes and adding bike buffer zones, so we'll see a narrowing of the travel lanes and a very well-marked out bike lane with a hatching buffer zone between the bike lane and the travel lane. And a use of green bike paint, which we're seeing more and more throughout our city as well as other cities around California. There's a bike box at the approach to Old Redwood Highway. This is kind of like a, this, a place for bikes to be, be safe and to go, to stop at that intersection. And traffic calming measures include travel lane speed reduction markers and enhanced crosswalks. There's also six lighted bollards at the intersection of East Yeah, East School Street, West Sierra Avenue. So there's been complaints of low lighting at that intersection. And there is a couple of streetlights, lonely streetlights out there, but it does, doesn't do enough. And what's been most effective is to bring that light down to the pedestrian level. So as you're, as you're driving to that intersection, the lighting at the pedestrian level will light up the pedestrians and make them more noticeable, as well as light up the surface of the roadway, so pedestrians walking at night will can see where they're going. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Okay, so, once we had navigated the Caltrans process and got our notice to construct, or approval to construct, we went ahead and advertised in November and opened bids on December 20, 2022. We received six bids, a good number again. And the low bid was provided by JV Lucas Paving for amounts of just under $2 million, which was nearly 22% under the engineer's estimate, which is significant. The low bid was evaluated and determined to be responsive. The second low bidder protested the low bids. The low bid, and the city evaluated. The protest letter did not find it to have merit, and so we recommend rejecting it. Next slide, please. The professional contracts. They're with the protracted environmental process. We, we have a request by the design engineer for another $9,500. And then, they presented, we require an engineering support during construction by the design engineer, and so that proposal came in at $24,285. And then we leveraged an RFP to select a qualified consultant to do the construction management inspection services for $341,261. And this is a special case because we have to keep impeccable files. Because at the end of the project, Caltrans will send kind of an investigator, and they come over and they, they, they want to look through every single piece of paper we have in our files. And they kind of threaten us. They threatened us before, they, they think they do that all the time of taking away the grant money if something's missing. So the construction management inspection consultant needs to really keep just really good files. And then, we, we looked at all of these proposals, and we found them to be fair and reasonable. These professional costs are, as with the construction contract, are accounted for in the project budget. Next slide, please. So here, here are all the costs laid out. The adopted city budget has $2.89 million approved for this specific project. And as you can see there, we're just a hair underneath with 2.87, well, two, nearly 2.9 million. Yeah, just slightly under the 2.89 million. 12,000 below there. So the, the total cost that we anticipate, that's even with a decent contingency, is less than the budget, therefore no budget amendment is being requested. The source of revenue for this, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, was a, adds up to one and a quarter million dollars, coming from, oh, just over 1 million from the One Bay Area Grant. Two, Cycle Two. And a $242,000 from the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021, PRISA. So that, that's, that's a great help, having, having gotten those grants. Next slide, please. That brings us to our recommendations, which are to adopt a resolution awarding the Downtown Civic Center Connectivity and Safety Improvements Project, JV Lucas Paving, and rejecting the protest by Argonaut Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the engineering support services during construction, Construction Management Inspection Agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments up to the approved project budget. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. Questions? Kay, did you have a question? Okay. Laura?
No, I figured it out.
You figured, okay, all right. Earlier, I thought maybe you had one. Laura, did you?
Just had a quick question. It's impressive to me that even though this project was delayed so long with the Caltrans approval, we're still able to do it within budget. Is that just because the, the bid came in so low, or or excellent planning on your part? How did we manage to do that?
Excellent planning, yeah, yeah, I was looking for an option, I mean, most favorable. Certainly the 22% below engineer's estimate, that was a key part of that. And we, we have a consultant that's well-versed in navigating the Caltrans process. So there was not a lot of missed, you know, not a lot of missteps and wasted effort. It was all pretty much following their process to the T.
Thanks.
Dan?
Two questions. One, a design question about the detection loops. There was a discussion last year, I believe, about that intersection on this project, about switching to a camera system that would actually detect bicycles. But this only mentions detection loops. What, what's the status of that?
Yes, it's, it's, we're, we're moving away, we're replacing detection loops that are in the ground with cameras. So all of our intersections are being moved to the cameras. At that intersection, which is West Sierra, East Cotati, Old Redwood Highway, the other three legs have video detection, but this leg, we're waiting on this project to convert the loops to that video, and that video will detect bikes and have that advanced detection dilemma.
Great.
Feature as well. So that is the direction we're doing, we're moving, and we're moving, we're actually making a lot of progress with that.
Great, thanks. I wave at them all the time. Now I see me. One other question about the protest. I, like, nothing in the protest letter was convincing to me, they were pretty trivial, supposed defects. But can you just fill me in, like, what if the second bidder, second-place bidder wanted to continue to escalate this? What are their options? And maybe, maybe there's a question for City Turnibacher.
Yes.
Yeah, they would have to file a lawsuit, it's basically a writ of mandate, challenging the, the contract. And, you know, the city can proceed with the contract even though that lawsuit is pending, so that's typically what happens. I've only had it happen once in my career, I don't know how many times this happened to Damian or Craig, it's pretty rare that contractors follow through if their bid protests are rejected.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. Sylvia?
Yeah, I have two questions. My first one is, I noticed that there's a DBE designation, so I wanted to just understand that a little more. It says DBE in good faith, effort documents. So the DBE, I, I was trying to do some research on that, but if you could just clarify that a little bit.
Disadvantaged Business Enterprise, so with the Caltrans delivery or process, yeah, delivery process, the, the bid packet, the specifications needs to include requirements for the bidders to go out and seek DBE companies for work that they subcontract. And so two or three, two, within two or three days following the bid opening, the, the low three bidders are requested to provide the good faith effort documentation.
Okay.
And, and they, the first, the top, the low, the bottom two bidders did provide that, and they were quite extensive. It's looking at databases for DBE contractors of those specific trades and getting a, getting that bid document in those company's hands. And so there's a 14%, I think, goal on this project, and they're to endeavor to meet that goal by using these methods. The, the, Lucas got to 11%, and wasn't able to get all the way to 14, but that is not a hard and fast requirement. They did make the effort, and so that is acceptable.
Okay, so it does give them, like, on a matrix, additional points or something, and a score in decision-making for them, or?
No, no, it's, as per public contracting law, code, we, we are obligated to award it to the low bidder.
Okay.
And so this is, these are baseline requirements that all bidders need to abide by.
Thank you. My other question was about the bollard lighting. Now, bollards are those, like, poles that come out of the ground. Are they being placed in the design? I don't know, we didn't see the design, but placed where there, I know there were some accidents recently in Hillsburg with some deaths, causing deaths of bicyclists. Are they located in a way where it's safety for bicyclists that use it in the area?
Right, I, they're, these, these are not in bike lanes, and that's where that accident occurred, was in a bike lane, so somebody going down on, you know, pretty fast on a bike could come upon this bollard. These are on the sidewalk, on the corners. And so the bikes are going to be in their bike lanes, and then on the sidewalks, you just have pedestrians walking along.
So they're not, yeah, they're not on the path, they're in a different location. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Craig, along those lines with the bollards, the, the lights, since it's down at the lower level, would there be any impact to residents from those lights being on?
I think the opposite, it would, it would reduce the impact to residents because the lights are shining kind of down, they're not going up. So I think, I, I think the impact to residents, which are right there on the opposite of City Hall, opposite side of the street, would be pretty much minimized.
Okay. Kay, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about, follow up on that with, you said in the sidewalk? I'm just thinking about people on their cellphones not looking where they're walking. It's on the side of the sidewalk, not in the sidewalk, correct? The lights?
Yeah, yeah, so we
Okay.
We went off, off the walking path, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Don't want to make it into an obstacle, of course.
Kind of like a slalom. My other question has to do with, since this is West Sierra and, you know, the La Plaza area, but in particular, West Sierra, is a extremely highly-traveled street. So what are our plans as far as mitigating traffic backups and, and the like? And will we be doing it all at once, or in sections, or could someone help me with that, because, yeah. I have this visions of these, these backups.
This is going to be a very, very busy construction season this spring, starting as early as March 1st. So public information message is to avoid West Sierra from, from 8 to 5 during this construction period, use alternative routes. We will be putting up advanced changeable message sign notices, putting out Nixle alerts, putting messages out on Facebook. But this is going, this is going to disrupt traffic. We will be able to leave one lane open, and it'll be flagged. The prior, so we're doing mill and overlay, and that allows us to keep a lane open. And there will be traffic delays, it's just unavoidable. And the way we would try to mitigate that would be just get to let, just notify the public, so that people can use alternative routes.
Yeah, and in using alternate routes, they are going to be going directly through many of the neighborhoods, so it may also require some diligence with the officers because some of those folks are not familiar with those areas, and there's stop signs, and there's kids, and the whole nine yards when they're used to doing a straight shot down West Sierra. So I think we need to be cognizant of that to, you know, kind of, so the residents know that, that, you know, we're, we're going to manage that with, within the neighborhoods as best we can during that. So hopefully, we don't have any issues, but just, I, I know that, you know, in, in past years, when there's been, you know, problems, people will tend to get off on railroad and kind of go through all the neighborhoods, and it does cause some, some issue with that. So I just want to be sure that we're, we're kind of being a little proactive with that, so we don't get, as was put out, bad actors in the neighborhoods, so with that. Any other questions? Yeah, Kay?
Yeah, I just, with the West Sierra project right now, I was just walking from my house to downtown and back, and was, just the walking through the construction area was a little challenging, they didn't seem to know where to send me, so just to sort of have a plan for that when they're, when they're working on it. So, like, I saw some kids kind of jumping over and, like, skipping around it, which made me a little bit nervous. So just, just sort of a, a plan in place for probably bicycles and pedestrians during construction, I think would be really helpful.
So we're not suggesting any specific alternates? I know sometimes cities, you know, kind of lay out an alternate, we're not planning on doing that, right? We're just letting people pick their own alternate? Is that true?
Where, where we can leave a lane open, there's no need for a detour, but I think there is a, there are sections that have alternative routes around there. And so when we would have a detour set up, we would install detour signs.
Okay.
To get, to get them back, back where they were heading, yes.
Right, you know, when you think of, like, Water Street, there's, you know, that, that's it, there's, there's no way around that, so, yeah, we would have to accommodate that.
Leave them down at that end road.
Yeah, a lot of the other streets, at least, there's, there's other, other path, pathways out, but yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, then I will open this item up for public comment. Are you running again?
I'm running.
So I assume that this does not include sidewalks where there are no sidewalks now. There will be no new sidewalks, like on the other side of West Sierra, which is, I passed by, uh, older woman with a child this, just today, who were on the street because there's no sidewalk. And I, I don't know. And if there are no sidewalks, the Mobile Home Park community has been asking for a crosswalk at least to the sidewalk. So I wonder if that could be included in the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, sidewalks on the other side? I don't have any pictures, so I can't.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's no new sidewalks proposed as part of the project. The side,
The creek is there, right? There's not really.
Yeah, it would have to be some sort of cantilevered sidewalk if there were a sidewalk there. Um, but, uh, generally there wouldn't, there wouldn't, I don't think be the need for the sidewalk. There might be little localized places where it might make sense in, as a future project, particularly maybe between the Mobile Home Park and Water Road, that little stretch right there. Um, it's the only one I can think of off the top of my head. Otherwise, there's continuous sidewalk on the other side.
And are we enhancing the, um, street crossing there at Water Road, right by the, um, Mobile Home Park? Or will it stay exactly like it is? Are we enhancing that crosswalk?
Craig, do you know if the crossing there is being changed from what it is now?
Well, we, we just put in that three-way stop at West School Street and then there was some, I, I thought we put crossing enhancements at Water Road with our, um, um, bike pad safety enhancements projects a couple of years ago. There's, there is a RFD right there, I believe. Um, I know it's not.
That's at Cypress, Craig. That, I mean, there didn't used to be a crosswalk at Water, but we do have a crosswalk there, but it's just a, just a crosswalk.
Crosswalk, yeah. Um, yeah, no, we're not, we're not putting any enhancements to that as part of this project.
So maybe in a, in a future safety enhancement.
Yeah, we can, we can pick those ones up, right? With those, um, annual projects.
Okay. Um, then, um, I will open this up, uh, to the Zoom members. I see we have one hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. Neil Hancock, you have the floor.
Yes, hello. Thank you for the, um, the good overview. Really appreciate the, um, the bicycle, um, green marking on the road, the proposed. Um, couple of, um, first of all, a question about sightlines. Um, I, I know that we've been lifting the bar and really appreciate that, lifting the bar for visibility, but the, the sort of what really makes it visible is, is that drivers in vehicles can see pedestrians or can see other people on the road and react in sufficient time. So that's, that's the sort of the speed issue. And I, you know, I think the flashes are definitely doing something. And I think the comment, um, that, uh, Mr. Scott had about getting the visibility with, um, uh, some lights on a crosswalk are also very, very good because the, uh, the crosswalk that's at the end of Arthur Street, um, that, that's been an issue really is that it's just slightly out of the light. So I, I think the, the critical safety issue that's coming up is, is that for people in a vehicle, that they actually get a sightline to any pedestrians that are crossing the road. And I, I don't think we've really got the buffers or the available space on a lot of these sightlines. We haven't really got enough space around the crosswalks for a driver to be able to see that there is somebody in a crosswalk and for them to be highlighted. So that's, that's just really a question of, um, um, or a, a comment really about the, 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 the visibility. We did have somebody that got killed some years ago. It might've been 10, 15 years ago, walking somewhere between that Hillview Drive, um, the, the Mobile Home Park and Cypress Avenue. There was somebody on there that was walking on the other side on the, the lack of a, um, pedestrian sidewalk on there. So I, I just wonder if we can't at least put a sign up, say that pedestrians should be on the other side of the road. I mean, bicycles can come along on the west side and hopefully that's safer, but, um, you know, so how to make it more visible for pedestrians that it's, it's, it's risky activity if they're walking on that right-hand side. So, um, the other question is, it's really nice to see ClearGov, um, and the comments coming from there, but I've been using change management, which is what that represents for over 30 odd years. And one aspect of it is to be able to be notified what it is that changed. So it'd be really nice to see, we've had a number of emails through about the ClearGov, but it would be really nice to see that it actually says, hey, the dates have changed or what is it that's actually changed? So look forward to it on the ground. Really appreciate that it happened, that the planning went with the sewer line beforehand and we now get the road changed on top. Thank you very much.
Jenny Blaker, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you. Um, yes, I'm also, um, wanting to comment on pedestrian safety on West Sierra. And it seems that if work is being done, uh, isn't now the time to address it rather than waiting for a few more years? Um, the side of West Sierra Avenue, where Water Road, Hillview Road, Cypress, um, that whole area is quite dangerous in places with no sidewalk. And another corner that can be very dangerous is West Sierra Avenue and Valparaiso, where, um, if you're walking on the sidewalk, there is a sidewalk there on West Sierra and then you turn into Valparaiso, there's, there's nothing there. So you have to be really careful that, uh, cars aren't coming into Valparaiso from the west side. It just, um, yeah, just another plea for safety for pedestrians whenever possible. Thank you.
Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for those comments. Um, Damian, is there any signage that we can, um, put out to encourage folks to not walk on the creek side there? Or is that?
I'm not really aware of specific signage.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, like a person with a, like, no, like an X through it, like, don't go there, you know, I, maybe, but I, I don't know. I'm not familiar with specific signage. I mean, it's pretty apparent that you shouldn't be walking there, I think, for most people, but, um, you know, we can look into it and see if there's something that makes sense.
I've seen plenty of folks and must admit that before they actually put that nice, um, crossing there at Cypress, when you couldn't get across Cypress, to Cypress, except down by City Hall, then, you know, you kind of were forced to walk on that side because you were never going to get across West Sierra. So that has definitely helped, although we still do have some folks that don't realize that the, uh, flashing lights mean that they should stop for pedestrians. Sometimes two or three cars have to go by before someone stops, but eventually they get it.
So, I mean, so we could look into, see if there's some sort of sign that would make sense. Um, yeah. And, you know, maybe, uh, we can, you know, also look at the Water Road crosswalk and see if there's something there while we're in the road. If there's something that we could do that would improve it. If it's not already in there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, with the federalized project, I just want to, um, kind of put a notation on that. Like any kind of a change, we have to go through this large process. It, it's much easier to navigate this project by leaving it pretty much with very few changes. If we were to add anything, um, there's a lot of steps to go through, a lot of hoops that we'd have to go to, to show Caltrans that it was part of the original intent. I, I did, I did want to add that after, this, this project will significantly change the way West Sierra looks. Um, it, it's, it's going to slow down traffic by narrowing the traffic lanes. There's going to be these hash marks coming out from the bicycle buffer zone painting. The, the bike lanes are going to be a lot more prominent. There's going to be the green bike lanes. Um, you know, right now, West Sierra Avenue is, is kind of a racetrack, you know, people go speeding through there. And so there's a lot of elements to this project that, that's looking to change that.
And will the speed limit be lower? No?
That, that only happens with a speed survey. So you get the 85, 85 percentile, which we.
Right.
Hate and loathe.
One of the ones that I hate. So maybe the next time that comes around, we can look at that.
Right. That is still in effect, so.
I mean, the good news is, is if you put improvements like these in place, then it might encourage people to go slower. And so next time you do the survey, hopefully you record lower speeds.
And for the benefit of a lot of the council that's new, they have this wonderful thing where, where basically the speed limits are based upon what the, what did you call it? The average or the, what was the?
Eighty-fifth percentile.
The eighty-fifth percentile of the people, how they drive through it, whether or not we think that that's safe or not. That's how they judge that. And a couple of our streets, um, the speed limits were raised because people thought, as Craig said, they were racetracks. And, um, apparently we don't have a whole lot of choice in that. So that's one of the other wonderful things that, that we, we, we get to, uh, manage, if you will. Okay. So, public comment, oh, it's over. Um, so do we have questions or comments or I saw Laura, Ben, I didn't, yeah.
Just a quick comment. You know, pedestrians use the other side is a pretty common sign with an arrow pointing at the crosswalk and that might do a tiny bit. But, yeah, at this point, I'm not in favor of redesigning the project from this.
I wouldn't want to wait another year and a half to get Caltrans approval. So with that, um, if there's no more comments, um, I'd be looking for a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion. Um, a motion that the City of Cattare Award the Downtown Civic Center Connectivity and Safety Project to JV Lucas Paving Incorporated, rejecting the protest by Argonaut Incorporated and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the engineering support services during construction, the construction management and inspection agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments up to the approved project budget.
Second? Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? Any abstentions? Not seeing any? That passes 5-0. So with that, we will move on to our added item, which is the proposed letter of support for SCTA TRICP grant application. And so that, um, Councilmember Rivers gets a new acronym. T-I-R-C-P is transit and inner-city rail capital projects. So you have a new one to add. So there you go. So, um, Damian, are you going to take this?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just give a quick staff report. Um, we love our acronyms. And, so anyway, so this, uh, item just briefly is SCTA, which is, yeah, and it's actually reversed and, sorry, there's a typo there. In the, uh, in the subject, T-R-I-C-P, it's actually, uh, T-I-R-C-P, kind of like RSPCT, but, you know. Anyway, um, so SCTA is applying for a grant and you see in the staff report, the list of things that they're applying for. Um, I would say just categorically, it's, uh, it falls into two giant buckets. Um, the biggest one being continuing to find grant money for the extension of the Smart Train, um, from Windsor North to Cloverdale. And then the other sort of larger bucket of funds is electrifying buses. So Sonoma County Transit Buses and Santa Rosa City Buses and, um, electrification infrastructure to support those, um, new buses. So that's, um, that's basically what we're talking about here. And, um, SCTA has bundled them all up into, um, a grant application and they are going to be, uh, discussing this at their board meeting on February 6th, which as we stated earlier in the meeting, is before our next council meeting. Um, and they've, uh, they've requested that, uh, Cattare and other cities, um, provide, or consider providing a letter of support for the grant application for, um, for the benefit of the region. The sample of the, um, of the letter that would be proposed to be sent by the mayor is attached as well. And, um, I think that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Questions? No? No questions? We'll open this up for public comment then. Anybody I see shaking heads, no. And then to our Zoom attendees.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. So I'll bring it back to the council. And if there's no further comments, I would entertain a motion. Yeah, then you may have.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, comment in support of this. I, uh, teach up in Windsor and, um, I think a train between Windsor and Hillsburg would be amazing for the kids and get them more engaged and involved. And I, I think this is just a really cool thing and I definitely want to, um, express support for it.
We'll eventually get to Cloverdale. So anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we support, um, the letter of support for SCTA T-I-R-C-P grant application.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Not hearing any? That passes 5-0. So, let's see, where are we at now? Did you, yes?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, comment for the record, the comment she made about the acronym, my, my acronym list. I actually am going to give the, uh, uh, link to Damian to add to the city website. It's basically just over a hundred, uh, acronyms that have been in our agenda packets. So if anyone from the public is also interested in understanding what these packets say, I would like to make it public. So anybody who it finds it useful can use it. But that's all it is. Just a very simple spreadsheet, acronym, what it means. And that's it.
Great. Thank you for that. So with that, we will move on to item 11, which is the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, uh, first of all, I just wanted to let everyone know that there's a, um, you know, the mobile testing site that's out at the St. Joseph's Park and Ride. Um, the county is continuing to, uh, demobilize their testing sites as they're winding down the COVID response. The COVID dollars are winding down and so the response is winding down. They're, uh, looking at, uh, demobilizing that, uh, I believe either at the end of this week, after the end of this week or maybe next week, but pretty soon. So there, that's going to be demobilizing here very shortly. Um, as, uh, the council knows, but maybe the public doesn't know yet, the SAFE team has expanded to Sonoma State University. So that's very exciting. There was a ribbon cutting this week. Um, and the other exciting news related to SAFE, which is our Mobile Mental Health Crisis Response Team, is that they are now running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Um, we're, um, quickly approaching our next, uh, neighborhood officer meeting date and this is going to be, uh, February 6th to the 10th. And so there's going to be notifications going out on that soon. Uh, they are still Zoom meetings this time and then we're going to start, we're looking into how to do them hybrid. That's the, we're trying to move to, but, um, uh, we're working on that. And, um, uh, if people want to find out where, which, uh, you know, which beat they live in, they can always go to the city website. It's a, and we're working on other ways to inform people as well, to make it more apparent. Um, just a reminder, Administrative Services is temporarily relocated due to the Windows project that's occurring along the West Sierra side of City Hall. Um, the Administrative Services Department is the place that you go to pay your water bill or get a business license. Um, and they are, uh, currently located off of the, um, police lobby. So go to the police department. It's on the right there, um, off the lobby. Good news on water supply, um, due to the recent rains, Lake Sonoma, storage has increased from, um, 97,000 acre feet, um, before the storms. So this is December to, um, 230, over 235,000 acre feet as of yesterday. Um, so that's, that's very good for us, for water supply. Um, the water supply pool goes to 245,000 acre feet. So a little less than 10,000 acre feet to go. And then it gets into the, um, then it gets into the flood supply pool. So it's, you can think of it like a layer cake. The bottom layer is water supply. Once it hits the top of that sort of cake, then it goes into flood control. And, um, operationally, what that means. And, um, operationally, what that means is the water agency stops controlling, um, or Sonoma Water, stops controlling the dam operation, and it moves to the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers operates the dam while it's in the flood pool. So the dams have been doing their job in, um, increasing our water supply, but also, uh, minimizing flooding impacts downstream. So luckily, Gurnville was not hit. Combination of dam retention plus just the way the storm spaced out, I think, um, helped Gurnville avoid the worst of the impacts that they could have seen with the, with the rain and flooding. Um, projects, so the sewer main, we talked about that earlier. But the, um, I think the main thing I just wanted to convey about the sewer main project on West Sierra Avenue is that, um, permanent trench paving. So what we see out there is patch paving, so we've been pushing the contractor to get that permanent paving on there before the next storm hits, which is expected in probably early February. Um, so they are planning to be out there later this week to start the permanent trench paving. Um, and, you know, so then the trench will be, um, in pretty good shape and ready for the actual street project, which will follow a month or two later. Um, and so, uh, they should finish with the trench paving by early next week, according to the schedule, and then, um, move to also do striping, like, you know, restoring road striping and, um, some concrete work related to the project. City Hall window replacements, that's underway. And, um, we're doing that for energy efficiency and noise reduction. So, um, that's going to be going on for another, um, probably a month or so. And Cattati Park refurbishment also was paused due to the weather, but, um, we expect that to be picking back up again.
Bless you.
Bless you. And, uh, moving on from public works projects to, um, some planning stuff, the housing element, we do expect to see by, uh, by mid-February, um, right around Valentine's Day, to get comments back from the state, um, HCD, um, housing and community development. So we should be seeing comments back from them, and we hope to be able to quickly turn it around and get that in front of the Planning Commission and Council for, um, for adoption. And then lastly, just some quick recreation updates. Um, just a reminder, on February, uh, or I'm sorry, uh, Friday, January 27th, we're hosting our first Kids Night Out event for 2023. And, um, even though it's the kids that are going, it's actually for the parents, so they can go on a date night or whatever they want to do, that's from five to nine. And, um, it's, uh, you know, crafts games, pizza dinner, watch a movie, and, um, just fun stuff for kids while the parents do what they want to do. In February, we're bringing back our very popular Valentine's Day grams, where we can send a valentine to your loved one at any Cattati resident or business address. And it's a cookie, flower, candy, mini balloon, sticker, and personalized cards. And they usually sell out early, so if this is of any interest to you or anyone listening, I would recommend that they, um, sign up for one quickly. We're also doing in March our, um, Cattati, uh, Camp Cattati Spring Break Camp, and also our Colors of Spanish Spring Break Camps. Um, both of those sell out quickly, so I'd recommend signing up early if there's any interest there. And then just a heads up that we have many more programs coming in the spring, including Bunny Brunch around Easter, uh, the Spring Festival at the Verande Floretti Ranch, the, uh, Community Campout also at the ranch, Community Yard Sale, and, um, many, many other things, so. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
Are any of these events for adults or just kids?
Uh, yeah, so there's, um, the, you can say the kids camp, the kids' night out is. Same with the Valentine's Day grams, but the, uh, the actual camps are, are kid camps. But we do have, I've been talking about it, we do have a lot of workshops also, if you know.
I had a question about, um, the flood control pool. Um, I remember, was it 2011 or 2012 when we hit the federal debt limit and had the government shut down? Some of the Army Corps of Engineer functions were shut down. Do you anticipate that there could be any effect because of the current debt limit stuff that's going on? On the, or is that such an essential function that that won't get paused or?
Yeah, I don't think that would be affected.
Okay.
Um, because it's, I think it's, it would be considered essential, and I don't think they would de, like, stop funding to it.
Okay.
Um, it's usually the softer stuff that they tend to pause.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions? No? All right, then we will move on to city council member reports.
Well, I'll just, um, share that, um, a number of us went to the new council member, new mayor's CalCities conference last week, and it was really informative. I learned a lot about, um, social media, um, budgets, just a lot of different things about being a council member. So that was really informative. I learned a lot, I met a lot of people from different cities. So I just want to, you know, appreciate the opportunity.
I want to, I appreciate the SAFE ribbon cutting at Sonoma State. Three of us were able to be there, um, and, uh, it was a great event. And fun to see the real van, you know, the van that was at the original ribbon cutting was kind of a stand-in. Now we got to see the real, uh, the real thing. And to meet a lot of the first responders who staffed the SAFE vans, that was great. Um, and the Russian River Watershed Association, we're having the cities meeting with them to go over this, the 2324 proposed work plan tomorrow. Um, and I think, uh, Vice Mayor Sparks, who's the alternate, and I and Damian will be there on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you.
Laura? I'm sorry, just a quick report. Um, I found out from, uh, Councilmember L Word that she needs me to fill in, um, for the last half of the Continuum of Care meeting tomorrow. So I'm actually, uh, going to have to not be present. Sorry, just found out today.
And do you have any council member report?
Um, if you want to talk about our tour of Le Bath Landing, I'll leave that to you.
Go ahead.
Um, Mayor Harvey and I were able to tour the, um, new emergency interim housing facility in Renter Park. And we, I was really impressed with the, the operator there. It seemed like a really good facility. It was very tightly run. So, uh, if you, if anyone has an opportunity to tour, I'd re, I recommend it. It was, is a, um, really good to see, see it, uh, working pretty well, it seemed like.
Great. Kay, do you have a report?
Um, yeah, I'd like to echo what, uh, Sylvia said about the CalCities event. I just learned a ton and feel, um, like I know where to look for my questions now, which was super helpful. And, um, also to thank, uh, Jenny, Neil, and Shelley for, uh, walking me around Cattati and Laguna, um, Santa Rosa, and, um, learning and seeing the amazing things. I definitely have to go back out there now that it's all the rain, because I imagine it's going to look completely different from the last time. But I really want to thank them for taking the time and, um, showing me as a councilwoman what's going on, because I really appreciate that.
Okay, so, um, as was already pointed out, uh, we had the, um, SAFE edition of SSU. It was a great event, although a little bit windy. It was, it was really good, and it was really well attended. And, and it was great that some of the council members could, could join us. Um, the new mayor's and council members academy, I thought that it was great. There was a, a lot of stuff, and, um, our city attorney would, will be very happy to know that we, um, don't engage in a lot of the things that were demonstrated for us in the, I forget what that city was called? Yeah, yeah, Disjunction Function City. That was, uh, yeah, that we don't have those behaviors, so you'll, you'll be happy.
Yeah, I, I was mentioning something to, uh, one of the council members, and they pointed out dysfunction junction as a jurisdiction. I wasn't aware of that jurisdiction, but now.
Well, you're, would probably be glad that you don't represent, represent them.
Well, I usually use Oakland and, uh, Los Angeles and San Francisco as the examples, because, you know, they, they, they tend to have the issues that get the most news.
Yeah. And, and the Le Bath Landing, I mean, it was pretty, it was pretty incredible, um, to see what they did and what they did in such a short period of time. And one of the residents, um, she actually let us, you know, see, um, see her room. And, and the folks, um, seemed, you know, extremely happy, and it seems just very organized. And it's pretty incredible that they were able to put that together in, in such a really short period of time. Um, the other thing is, is that they're holding, um, continuous meetings with the neighbors. And, um, in the very beginning, they said, you know, there were a lot of attendees. And now, you know, it, there's really no attendees, and, and they're not, um, you know, having a lot of feedback from folks. So, so that's good to know, that there being, um, very good neighbors out there, so that is awesome. And lastly, um, during the, uh, new mayor's and, uh, council members academy, I had to jump out to do the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. And that meeting, um, we said goodbye to four of our members that, um, did not, uh, run for council. And that was kind of sad, because some of them had been on, you know, for quite some time. So we said goodbye to all of them. And then the one item that, um, is of interest probably to folks, um, we're going to do a, um, one-year, um, software license, uh, for, with this company called Carit, C-A-R-E-T, and that is to help manage the, um, the food donations. So it's a software that was developed, um, so that they can both, on both ends, that they, they can manage that food, those food donations. So, um, the, um, we are paying for a software license, and that will allow all of the tier-one and tier-two groups within our communities to be able to use that if they want. A lot of them are using pieces of paper and spreadsheets and that kind of th, thing. But this is nice, because it's an app, and they just, you know, kind of enter in the app, and it, and it manages, you know, pickups and deliveries and what you have and what you may have. And, um, it, it was really very well thought out. So hopefully, you know, um, our, uh, folks in the tier-one and tier-two, uh, food, uh, waste will, um, look at that and, and find it useful. So with that, that is all I have to report. So, we're done with that. Um, so we will move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. So open public comment on that. The audience I'm seeing shaking heads, no. And so online, can we see if there's any?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, speaking to our Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, great, I'll bring that back. And then we will move on to information received after the agenda was posted. And I think we have a whole list of letters. Do I have to list all of the letters, or just, they were added to the web agenda, so they are available, um, for the public to see? Correct? Am I?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So with that, um, we will be moving on to closed session, and we have. Yeah?
Um, since most of the letters were directed to my, um, appointment, I just want to, uh, thank the public for their comments and engagement. I very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for that. So we will be moving to closed session, and there's two items. First one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code Section 549, 56 dot 9 D1. Name of the case is George Berich and Lori Alderman versus City Cattati and John Delasso, case number 21CV00034-EMC. And then the second item that we have is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 54956 point 9 D4. And there is one case. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session. But.
And we are back from closed session at 10:06. And Mr. Bucker?
We do have a reportable action on item 15A, which is the first of the two closed sessions. The second closed session, there's no reportable action. So this is the report on the first item. This is the Berich and Alderman versus City of Kattati and John Deloso case. The city council unanimously approved a settlement agreement negotiated between the city's insurance carrier and the plaintiffs. The general terms of the settlement are that the plaintiffs and their attorneys will receive $80,000 in cash. The plaintiffs will provide a release of claims that they may have prior to January 5, 2023. And the city does not admit any liability. Just a brief comment on this case and the settlement. The settlement amount is a small fraction of what the plaintiffs claimed. There is no finding of any city liability, and it eliminates the possibility of any new lawsuits being brought by the same plaintiffs for any previous grievances.
Thank you. And with that, I believe we are, where are we? We are at adjournment, and we are adjourned then at 10:08. Thank you, everyone.
And we are back from closed session at 10:06. And Mr. Buckner?
We do have a reportable action on item 15A, which is the first of the two closed sessions. The second closed session, there's no reportable action. So this is the report on the first item. This is the Berich and Alderman versus City of Kattati and John Deloso case. The city council unanimously approved a settlement agreement negotiated between the city's insurance carrier and the plaintiffs. The general terms of the settlement are that the plaintiffs and their attorneys will receive $80,000 in cash. The plaintiffs will provide a release of claims prior, that they may have prior to January 5, 2023. And neither, and the city does not admit any liability. Just a brief comment on this case and the settlement. The settlement amount is a small fraction of what the plaintiffs claimed. There is no finding of any city liability, and it eliminates the possibility of any new lawsuits being brought by the same plaintiffs for any previous grievances.
Thank you. And with that, I believe we are, where are we? We are at adjournment, and we are adjourned then at 10:08. Thank you, everyone.